Twenty-one Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any announcements this evening. Anybody else have anything they want to throw under chairman's announcements? Seeing as none, we'll move right into agenda item number one, which is a hearing for pole petitions, 2904-7637 Walnut Street and 2904-7664 Wollam Lake Road and possible votes. Need to open the public hearing, right?
You do. Am I reading the petition?
Yep. To the Town Council of Douglas, Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Electric Company requests permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the following public way or ways. Wollam Lake Road, the petition's catch for installation of pole sixty-one dash one with an anchor, sixty-one dash three and sixty-one dash five and pole sixty-one dash seven with Hearing is open.
As I recall, these are all pretty straightforward.
Well, there's a couple from Douglas that is here in the audience today. But do we normally have a National Grid or a Massachusetts Electric Company, I believe?
Do we have representation? Thank you.
Do you want to sort of read the petition for the one on Walnut Street as well?
Sure.
Just so we can handle it all together in one public hearing?
Yes. Notice has been, having been given and public hearing held, oh no, I'm sorry, wrong one. I don't have the second one in my packet. Or do I?
Keep going, keep going.
You want mine?
I'll get it. After this, ma'am. Let me see. Yeah, I'll just borrow yours, sorry Tim.
It's all right. Give me yours, I'll take it.
All right. Notice, notice having been given and public hearing held as provided by law, it is hereby ordered that Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc., be they are hereby granted joint or identical locations for permission to erect and maintain poles, wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary in the public way or ways hereinfore referred to as requested in the petition of said companies dated the twenty-seventh day of January two thousand twenty-one. All construction under this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions: poles shall be of solid timber and reasonably straight and shall be substantial, set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked and filed with this order, Plan Number 2904-7637, dated ten thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. They may attach to said Massachusetts Electric Company not to exceed twenty wires and by said Verizon New England, Inc., not to exceed forty wires and four aerial cables, and of all said wires and cables shall be placed at a height of not less than eighteen feet from the ground. The following are public ways or, the following are the public ways or parts of ways along which the poles above referred to may be erected, and the number of poles which may be erected thereon under this order are Walnut Street, that's to rebuild four thousand feet of circuit to three dash four seventy-seven A1 space from P thirty-one Walnut Street to P forty-six dash fifty Wollam Lake Road. So that would be the second public hearing. Can we have someone to speak on the first one?
We're on Walnut Street, number one sixty-five. The only concern we have is the sketch that you guys have that was mailed up to us is inconsistent with the easement that we have, that we granted, so we're not sure if we bring that up here or if we talk to National Grid directly about that.
Matt, would they want to take that up with Grid themselves?
Grid's on the line, so let's try to figure out what happens.
Yeah, do we not have it on the?
So we had an amendment to the drawing. We thought it was all ironed out last October when we signed the easement, but just yesterday the tree crew showed up at our front yard ready to cut down a bunch of trees where the pole isn't going to go. So we're thinking maybe the new sketch hasn't been submitted to everybody involved, and where do we go from here with that? I do have a copy of it with me.
So, is that something the gentleman from National Grid can speak to?
Sorry, the call, well, I think, did you say something about the sketch being edited?
Yeah, the sketch that's provided in the packet, I guess, is inconsistent with the original sketch that was agreed upon during, and it's reflecting upon his easement.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the design that did the job, just to explain the necessity of the poles to begin with, but they were in last ditch. Is there anything I'd have to reach out to him, to be honest with you? I was unaware of any of that.
Yes, I do have the, I do have the updated sketch in front of me. I could leave it here or if you want to reach out or come by the site.
So on, those are petitions regarding the two tickets, one sending three six three seven. That's the one question.
I have a number on the sketch, I just have to find it here.
While he looks for that, could you just tell us your names and address?
Lee Simon Jeff Nacy, one sixty-five Walnut Street.
Thank you.
Sketch number two nine zero four seven six three seven would be the amended sketch.
Last sketch that have this, this travels December tenth. Two nine zero. I forgot the second one here, I know there's several jobs connected to this. So they got one Walnut Street that ends in six three seven, and this one Wollam Lake Road ending six six four, which, which now will go across here in front of us.
This is Walnut Street.
One sixty-five.
No, no, it's sketch number six thirty-seven, that's the one you want to look at.
Three seven, okay. The most recent concerning sketch on that was December, December seventh. It looks like it's the most recent updated one that I've looked at.
December seventh, okay, well, it's later than, the one I have is ten twenty-one, so, but I guess my concern is the tree company's not aware of it because they were ready to cut down the wrong patch of trees yesterday.
Do you know the tree that should, you know, what changes were?
Well, the original plan showed the pole going right in the center of our property, but it's been, it was going to be a new pole number thirteen, but it was determined that the existing pole number thirteen could stay in that location to the right of our driveway and then would only be getting a new anchor, so then we wouldn't need any trees cut down for that. As opposed to?
Oh, okay, so putting in a thirteen, they're removing the original spot in thirteen, so the new one is, looks to be directly in front of us.
That's on the original sketch, but that would involve cutting down a whole row of trees that we didn't want to lose. So we had the line crew out to look at it and they said we could leave the existing pole thirteen location, but just update it with a newer, bigger pole in the same spot was the way that it was worded to us.
It's run a lot of lines, so.
Yeah, it's almost, it's, it's not really the lot line, it looks that way on paper, but it's to the right of our driveway, looking from the street.
All right, yeah, let's take that just aside. Okay. So now with that, that works, the location, does that, does that work even as far as, did the update work or not work?
The original.
P thirteen?
Where the, where the pole is now would work, yes.
Okay.
The original sketch showed it all the way to the left of our driveway, in the center of the property. We want to leave it right where it is now, just update it to a new pole. That was the easement that we talked about in October.
Okay.
Wouldn't have to redo the easement if you're just replacing the pole, right?
Not sure.
What's that, Dave?
I don't believe you'd have to redo an easement if you're just replacing the pole in the same spot, correct?
Yeah, they came to us looking for an easement so they could do that. Well, they originally came to us looking for an easement for a new pole location.
Right. I see that on the drawing, yeah.
Yeah, they would have to wipe out a string of probably ten sixty-foot-high old trees.
Oh.
And it just, we didn't want to do that. So the line crew came out, did a measurement from pole twelve existing to the existing pole thirteen, they said they could still make that span.
Yep.
So we could leave it there, they just have to do a new anchor. So we thought it was all ironed out, like I said, but the tree crew showed up yesterday. We just want to make sure before something bad happens.
Is the new pole to be a taller pole?
Yeah, they got a taller pole for the new wiring.
Okay.
So I think what we'd want to do is to put a hold on the Walnut Street pole petition, have them updated with the correct plans.
I think so, yeah, because this shows it to be removed.
Yeah. Talking about it's not what's in front of you.
So we can't approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
I'll just leave it to you guys as well.
All right. We'll take it so we can update.
Yep.
We'll go back to them and say they need to refile because their.
I agree.
Not the same as their petition.
We don't have a current, we've not filed a pole thirteen, that's under the C one though, if they had one already, we wouldn't go for it.
All right, so.
So they didn't do any cutting?
They didn't do any cutting, they were about to. Luckily, the guy was nice enough to knock on the door and ask permission first.
Yeah.
And my wife said, I think you're in the wrong spot. So he said, all right, we'll stop. But obviously, the plan hasn't been amended.
Right.
All right.
Glad it worked out.
Yeah, it would have been a lot of trees to lose.
All right, so we're gonna.
I move that we pass over this?
Yeah, the Walnut Street, we have two of them that are in front. The Walnut Street pole petition.
Well, you're going to close the hearing.
We're going to close the public hearing before you can.
I'll do that after the, you close the public.
You know, the past chairman, they tend to be sticklers about these things.
So I don't, if there are no questions or concerns?
They're both opened under the same public hearing now.
I know.
So we probably want to figure out.
Do one motion at the end then.
Yeah, we want to figure out what we're doing with the Wollam Lake Road one before we close the hearing.
I have no questions about the Wollam.
Is there anyone on the call other than National Grid?
I don't want to hear any issues.
I need whoever is screen sharing to stop. Call no. I don't know who it is.
Is it a picture of the map?
No, it's just me.
All right, is there anybody on the bridge that was looking to speak on the Wollam Lake Appears to be nobody. So, because there's nobody objecting to it, and there was a memo from the police chief that he has no issues with it.
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That's out.
Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Mike, you say?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Morris, aye. Okay, so the hearing's closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve one and hold one.
I would move that we approve the Wollam Lake Road pole petition and pass over the Walnut Street pole petition.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You say?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Morris, aye. Okay, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So.
Okay.
Stay in contact with us and we'll figure it out.
Right.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, folks.
Thank you.
You too. We approved the Wollam Lake Road pole petition. We passed over on the Walnut Street pole petition. That one's going to need to be refiled with the notes regarding the space and updated maps.
So Walnut Street needs to be filed?
Yes.
Okay, that will, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, next we have a discussion with Paul Peterson regarding the reprinting of the two hundred and fiftieth commemorative book and possible votes. Is Paul on the call? How are you, Paul?
It's difficult doing it this way.
It's impossible without that big screen and the extra. I don't hear him at all.
He's here, but this committee should do a little spotting to be known at first.
All right.
Okay, I don't care, but I'm trying to. The COFEST committee is doing two hundred and seventy-fifth celebration and recognition petition. At this time, they, they're going to discuss it at the next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks, so I don't think it's likely to need to do anything with it at this point. So I think it probably won't even require funding by the pound, but I'm not sure of that at this point. We can ask you at some later date after the, after the COFEST committee looks at it.
Okay.
If they are in favor of reproducing it and selling it or distributing it at the COFEST, it's just how many are we going to do it, and we're going to work that out shortly.
That sounds good. I know that this board, we reviewed it last meeting, and, and we're definitely in support of recreation of the book. So it, it's a wonderful read if you get a chance to flip through it. All right, well, there's no action for us to take on this one. Paul, thank you for joining tonight, and we'll look forward to hearing back from you.
Good night, thank you.
All right, we have Cedar Street Project Execution of Contract and Possible.
Mr. Chairman, council has advised that the board executes the contract even though I awarded the bid. So just so you know where you stand with this, we had many bids, all but one bidder was pre-qualified, so we had a very competitive show on this one. New England Bridge, Building and Bridge, won. After the low bidder pulled out, they had made a significant math error, so they withdrew their bid, which they're allowed to do because they had not yet awarded. So the second lowest bidder came in and is qualified and met all the requirements, all the background research checked out, so I awarded them the work on the twenty-fourth of February. The originals are signed already by New England Building and Bridge and they're in your office. So if you vote to execute the contract, you need everyone who's physically present to sign it, please, so that we can, that will be it, we'll get started as soon as the weather allows.
Ready up for a motion on this?
I move that, would we say award the contract or execute the contract?
Execute.
I move that we execute the contract as presented with New England.
Bridge.
Bridge and building. Building and bridge or bridge and building?
N-E-B-B.
New England Building and Bridge Company Incorporated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You say?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Dave, aye.
Morris, aye. Okay, request the DCR to release grant fund for approved public safety projects and possible votes. So, looking at the spreadsheet in our packet. I'm just looking to see what the projects are that we're looking to release them to fund.
And some turnout gear, I believe. It looks like that account has grown to sixty, almost sixty-two thousand dollars.
What's the cost on the drone?
Twenty-eight thousand, I believe.
Is there a representative from the police department on the call?
Who's, what is that person's name?
Nick Migliannico?
Yes, yes.
Hey, Chief.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Good, Chief.
You want to tell us a little?
I'm sorry, I heard Tim mention, you know, what we have on there is the drone, and our quote on that is, was twenty dollars.
And that, does that include training for operation and piloting it?
Oh, we already have licensed pilots out of the general, sorry, licensed through the FAA.
Okay.
With that drone, it'll have its own flare camera. It's, you know, a huge upgrade from what we have now.
Chief, what do we have now? I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, we have one of the small ones, a couple of years ago, we started up, we were able to fly one of the small ones out of our drug account, so we paid for that, a part of the budget we used on our asset, which money so we could get up and running with the pole. And even though it's only been two years, it's small, it's off, so we can't respond to this on this one. This one's much bigger, it flies longer, and the drone is incredible.
Would there still be a functional use for the old one, or is that just going to get retired?
I'm sorry, did you say that again?
Yeah, with the purchase of the new drone, with the old one, is that just going to get retired, or is there still some functional use out of it?
Yeah, this is an F one, I've been having a hard time hearing you. I think you said, is, are we still going to get some use out of the old one?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're definitely going to keep that one, we can still put that up in the air, fly it, we can use it for training, we can use it for other events, we're definitely going to keep it, so we'll have two in our unit.
Can you dogfight with the two of them?
He can't hear you.
Tell him to sign. I was just going to suggest that the price includes hellfire missiles.
Or at least a bunker buster.
I was always against the NDAA, I always was. So.
We talked about that a long time ago.
We did, we did.
I don't see any issues with the drone and.
Absolutely not.
No, it's definitely a kind of a new age of law enforcement, and I think in the past we've used that to find some people in the state forest. Given the utilization these days, I think it's a worthy use, and I think the people at DCR would appreciate us being able to better police their property.
Yeah, much easier and safer to go searching for someone with that rather than having to put people on the ground, especially in bad weather conditions.
All right, I have no issues with that.
Just, just to add to that, this is not, this will not just be used by the police department. Sergeant DeGen is the licensed pilot, he leads the unit, but he, the department town that requested its use, we would use it, we can take photos, aerial photos, so if you find a lot, we can use it for buying a lot before we get that structure fired, forest fires, we use it for accident construction, we use it for the building department, conservation. All they have to do is make the request, which will significantly air and fly it, it's a really neat reason, so anybody that needs to use it will have access to it.
That's good.
That makes sense, yes.
All right, and.
It sounds like a fantastically useful device.
Especially with those hellfire missiles. All right, and the fire department needs new turnout gear.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this furious texting activity on my part over here, it's because I am wicked good at math.
Wicked good?
Added up the drone at Sig twenty-eight, and the fire department requests thirty-five, and I get sixty-three, and there's only sixty-two in the account. What I asked the fire chief was, since you have applied for a grant for turnout gear, why don't we only authorize the spending of the amount that you need less the amount you expect from the grant? If you don't get the grant, we'll come back after another summer season and we'll have enough to cover it. So that would be giving them twenty-three thousand towards their turnout gear project.
And that would give them.
They have applied for twelve thousand.
That's going to give us twenty-eight and twenty-three is fifty.
Fifty-one, so I'll leave you with.
Okay. Ten, ten. And the kitty.
But that is why the fund was started, was for public safety. I don't know if you had a chance to read the assistant chief's memo, but it's well strapped today, I think it lays out the case, we've had personnel turnover, the people that are on now are not the same size as the people that were on, so their turnout gear is either too old or doesn't fit. So that is the idea of going after this fund, grant funds, to do this instead of bringing the budget, which is fine with me. The two things do work together, you know, we always have some fear of brush fire incident. The two things do work together, you know, we always have some fear of brush fire incident with people lost in the woods, and we would, both of these things would be active at the same time, but they're both directly relevant to public safety in the park, so I don't think we'll have any problem at all getting reimbursement from DCR.
I don't disagree. How much is the grant that the fire chief's going for?
Twelve.
For twelve? Okay. And I think historically, he's gotten his turnout gear, he's been funding it via grant money.
I get these grants confused out, this is an assistance of fire AFG grant, or if it's a safety grant.
I think he does the AFG grant for us.
It's a competitive application.
Because I think that's how we got some SCBA's too, was when he did that. All right, and you said to roll the fire department's request down to, did the chief?
Call it a twenty-three even. These figures are supposed to be very round numbers, so let's just call it twenty-eight for the police department drone, twenty-three for the fire department turnout.
Okay.
Make a motion that we ask the state to release twenty-eight thousand for the drone and twenty-two thousand for turnout gear?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You.
Boninay.
Cortez, aye.
Morse, aye. Next is to approve the job description and possible votes, one for the executive assistant and one for the director of community development.
Different topics, isn't it?
Yeah.
Take them one at a time.
We'll start with executive assistant.
So, we discussed the negotiation strategy for this position, and I crafted this job description to match that discussion. The notion is that the position really ought to be on the management table and exempt from overtime laws for a number of reasons, one of which is confidential position, secondly, has the authority to take independent action on certain matters such as licensing and internal management of pretty critical assets of the town, access to a lot of those critical assets, not just confidential information, but the actual running of the place. And I don't think we need to do significant salary adjustment, I think it's in the right range right now, it's competitive, we've done a number of research phone calls and web searches with our Massachusetts colleagues, and even though Suzanne is at the top step and therefore has a slightly higher salary than a number of her colleagues in other towns, because she has experience versus their relatively less experience. So, making the position exempt, changing the title, we'll have to go to town meeting and ask that the title be changed on the compensation table. I do have the authority under the Administrator Act to make temporary changes in temporary job descriptions, but your approval will push us forwards to town meeting approval. And then I can post it, and the decision was that we would post this position internally for both municipal and school department employees that might meet the requirements of the job. The rest, I'll entertain any questions you have about specific requirements of the job. When you write it all down, it's a big job, it's four pages of requirements, but I think they're all spot on with what happens.
The change of the job description and putting in the new requirements to it, I think is going to potentially free up some additional time that you currently have doing a lot of the spreadsheets and formulations and things like that. I'm assuming that would be a task that we would move over to that position if it's approved.
In an ideal world, this position would leverage a lot of what I do now that I have kept to myself just because of the excels, skills and whatnot, but it's not the highest and best use of my time to do what I did today, which is work on the presentation format of the budget so that people can follow it. It's a worthy task, but I can do that as QC, I don't need to be the one who actually manipulates the spreadsheet. So, that's the kind of help I'm looking for, a little bit additional, but really, most of what we're asking for is what the person does now, just free us up from the constraints of a forty-hour work week, because as he goes, we don't budget overtime for this employee. So, during the year, regardless of how busy we get, what the workload is, the town accountant always reminds us that we do not have the budget to pay this person overtime. Therefore, we get to forty hours and that's it, we have a triage of tasks.
Makes sense to me.
Just the confidential role piece, right, what qualifies someone? Why do we need five years of confidential experience if the person we in fact hire is capable, trustworthy and capable of keeping things confidential?
Because history is the greatest source of evidence. So, I'd like to know that somebody was able to keep confidences for five years, never disappointed anybody let them down. I think access to critical information, you don't know what somebody will do until they've been exposed to that level of risk, and they have to demonstrate the poise in real life to keep those confidences. I would venture to say, just knowing the layout of our personnel, we have quite a few people, more on the school side than here, but quite a few people who do keep those confidences and have been with the town for far more than five years. So, this is an overly restrictive?
That's what I was hoping to add on. All right, that's good.
So, you know, you've got a superintendent, business manager, I would consider all of those support staff that support the senior executives of the school department to be qualified, because they will have either dealt with student records or the internal dealings of the school department and would have clearly make out the keys that they held confidences.
All right, as long as it's not limiting and we have a fairly decent net to cast, that's cool. Works for me.
But do you want to venture a motion on that job description?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reapprove the executive assistant's job description as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? I hear the buzzing, I thought I might say something. Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You, aye.
Boninay.
Cortez, aye.
Morse, aye. All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will post right away, because we've got to get moving. It has to stay up for ten business days, so if I post on tomorrow morning, I've got three, five, it'll be when, two weeks from tomorrow before it comes down.
Okay.
But if we get enough candidates, we'll do interviews right away. Our thought is that there will be a transition process, the person would stay, if it's an internal candidate gets the job, would stay in their old job, and will be here with Suzanne a few hours increasingly, more and more, and hopefully at the same time, we'll be posting that person's position and filling it. It's a little bit tricky, but?
A lot of cross-training going on.
I think we can do it.
Cross-training is good.
Not as good as Peloton, though, is it?
Well, I still look fluffy, so I don't know.
Shave the beard, see if that helps.
Yeah, I might.
All right, so the director of community development position.
It's not in the packet, but I've sent it to you.
Yes, I did go through it, and there was an email that had ensued post that. So, and I can weigh in, as I am not in favor of replacing an engineer with an engineer. I think that we did send a lot of the engineering work out for peer review, and that we do have firms and fees that we collect in the process of planning. I think that a coordinator-style position would make more sense, simply because to help keep the board on track and organized and pack it together and moving it along so you're not dealing with four, five, six appearances in front of planning. That's my opinion.
I'm in agreement with your opinion.
Well, thank you.
I don't think we need to have an engineer as well. In fact, I've believed that for a long time.
I would say anything that speeds up the process of our citizens getting the permits they need and getting work done before the town, I'm in favor of, and if we can, it sounds to me as if we're going to save some money at it as well, so the proverbial win-win.
What are your thoughts, Tim?
We need an engineer, I think, with the chairman, and an engineer is likely to have less of these other skills if we may have that to do.
So, as it's crafted now, I allow for either, an engineer with a certain kind of experience, which would include municipal experience, or a planner that's been in a senior role, either as a department head in a small town or as a deputy in a figure of the year. I wrote it this way, not to dodge the fact that there's a difference of opinion around town as between the two, but to drill down on what I think I heard when I did interviews of various state boards. What people liked the most wasn't necessarily one qualification or another, it was the intellect, the work ethic, and the principled stance that people really drilled down on. They ascribed those qualities to the engineering background, but that isn't necessarily true that you have to be an engineer to be hardworking and smart and experienced. At the same time, a lot of planners can wander and be very academic, which I think we also would agree, we don't want studies written or verbose narratives. What we're really looking for is somebody who can grab a set of plans, write really crisp, good comments, get them to the planning board in a timely fashion so that the whole process is more efficient. So, I opted to cast a broad net. Now, this is a department head, so if I appoint someone, you have twenty-one days to disapprove. Just hearing the majority of the board say they don't really want an engineer in this position gives me a pretty clear sense that either I should take it out of the job description and come back to you with an edited form, like I tried, or just authorize me to take it out, or let, let's go forward and see what we get in the interview process.
I don't think that, I mean, I don't see rewriting it and then having to come forward again to change the job description. You say leave it, so you're casting a broad net, you'll get a different cast of characters that comes through.
Yeah, I'm for that, I think, I think we may have a preset idea as to what we want, but who knows what comes out of the woodwork?
Right.
Yeah.
Why not keep it wide and see who shows up?
Just no lawyers.
There will be no lawyers in this job.
Suddenly I feel discriminated against.
Is that the, is that the tape? Do you have?
Overtake.
Last action, two.
You and me.
Davis with some Hellfire missiles in his throat.
I think that was one right there.
Yeah.
All right. So, anybody want to make a motion on the director of community development?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve that job description as was presented as well.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You, aye.
Boninay.
Cortez, aye.
Morse, aye. All right, item number six, which I have to unpublish my address from public record after bringing this one up, but the last meeting, I said that I'd like us to sit down and have a discussion and consider a change of the selectman's stipend in doing an increase in possible votes on that. And I'm not trying to pick on any of the other elected officials, appointed officials or anything else that receive a stipend from the town, but I can say that in review of them, the Board of Selectmen's, which I think carries one of the larger amounts of responsibility throughout the town, has the smallest stipend. My thought process was, is I'd like to increase it, and like I said a moment for discussion, from $300 to $2,000 a selectman, with no additional stipend for being chair.
I'll start the discussion by saying this, this came up B.C., before COVID, I don't remember exactly when, and I'm sure our longtime viewers, both of them, will recall that I was opposed to it. And then came COVID. The load on this board increased dramatically, and I think coupled with some of the other things that we've had in town, we've done a lot of licensing, a lot of things with the marijuana business. Quite frankly, I'm no longer opposed, after seeing how much work this board did over the past year or so, probably more than a year now, right, with COVID, and some of the things we faced, some of the challenges we faced, and I think the board did an excellent job, overcame them, and I think it's largely because of the amount of work and time and effort the board as a whole put in. And when you look around at other boards maybe nearby, it becomes apparent, especially when, you know, we met every week for the whole summer, and I know that put a strain on people here, so I'm certainly open to this, where I wasn't a year ago, to be perfectly frank.
And I'm in agreement with you, David. I'm open to it as well. I've been on the board for just about fifteen years now.
Really?
We've had the same stipend, and I'm guessing that it was probably fifteen years previous to that, before the stipend was even taken into consideration with increase, I don't know when the last time that's happened. But I think it's time that the board takes some action and do something about the stipend. I would even propose a more aggressive proposal than you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was, I'd proposed increasing it to $3,000 with a $4,000 stipend for the chair. And I would also propose tying it to non-union cost of living increases for future increases to the stipend, so that future boards don't have to take it up again.
That's something I think that's very forward-looking, very smart to do, because it keeps you, number one, from having to raise it all the time, and number two, from being trapped, simply because it's an issue that's somewhat uncomfortable to discuss. And I know things like that have been attached to labor contracts in the past, I can tell you in my work that that's happened. So, tying it to a cost of living increase, I think is a smart idea for everyone.
And doing it, over tie it to non-union employees?
Right.
Since we're involved in negotiating contracts?
Absolutely, yes.
Sensible to that.
So, if there's a year that we end up, in the event, if we ever ended up in economic issues where there was no cost of living adjustment, then there wouldn't be a cost of living adjustment for the board's selectman either?
No.
That makes sense. What are your thoughts, Tim?
Well, I, I would think I was that sole selectman a couple months ago, we'll call it, that brought this up. I think it's completely defensible, I think it's time. I think our, our time on this board, yes, we serve because, because we want to make a difference in the community, but our time, you know, it should mean something, and if it's free, it means nothing, and, you know, ultimately, I, I think we do put a fair amount of time in. Oh, they hear me, don't worry.
I think one of those Hellfire missiles is?
Exactly. I can hear it.
You know, so I'm, I'm completely comfortable with it. The one thing I would say is that if we do do this, that we'd like it to be as transparent as possible, to have a discussion with town meeting and just let them know this is what we're doing.
And why?
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd make it a warrant, we'd have to make it a warrant article.
Elected official salaries and stipends are in their own article.
That would be my thought.
How about you, Hal, what do you think?
I don't hear the buzzing.
I probably would have stayed myself, like, over the years, I haven't taken it myself, I've been financially fortunate, but I can't say my point of view, so I don't begrudge anybody, but if anybody in the board were to serve hard, so I don't think it's unreasonable.
All right, do we want to make a motion on an amount? Do we like the 2,000 amount? Do you like the, where do we want to go?
I think it's been probably thirty years since an increase, so I don't think it's unreasonable to consider increasing the stipend to 3,000 with the extra $1,000 for the chairman, because right now, the chairman gets an extra $100 stipend over the 300 the So I would make a motion that we increase the stipend to $3,000 annually with $4,000 being a stipend for whoever holds the chairmanship.
I'll second that.
Oh, and future increases will be tied to the cost of living increases received by non-union employees.
I'll still second that.
On an annual basis.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing?
I would just, just procedurally, this is a town meeting warrant article, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we just add that it was Tim Bonanay?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Let the record reflect that Tim brought this up months ago.
Hey, I'm not afraid to tackle the big issue.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
You, aye.
Bonanay, no. I'm just kidding. Bonanay.
Cortez, aye.
Morse, aye.
Morse, aye. All right. Brings us to review warrant article for town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I can run through it quick, if you want me to. So first and foremost, the result of the action you just took will be reflected in the budget. That's what, there's a lot of routine, or the progression of the articles is familiar to people. The first one is the Finance Committee report. Article two will be the budget, the operating budget of the town and its enterprise funds. Article three will be the salaries of elected officials.
Tim's presenting that at town meeting.
Right. Article four will be Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District.
Always a.
They are set to appear before the Finance Committee at the end of the month. I believe they've scheduled their public hearing for their budget. Might be a week, so it might be in the week before Finance Committee hears from them. So we don't really know. And I haven't, we've got a call in to ask, enrollment drives a good portion of this, so we've asked, you know, what we should be expecting.
I know how the conversation will start, up in front of 432 boards of selectmen. Just saying.
Article five will be the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, as it normally is. Article six will be Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. So those budgets are dealt with separately. Article seven, the cable. Article eight is recurring business, which we summarize in this table that's produced Article nine will be the Personnel Bylaw, classification and update. So a number of the changes that have occurred this year, if they haven't already been captured with an amendment to the Personnel Bylaw, would be put in there into the compensation table so that the titles match step and grade designation. Article 10 would be the adoption of a five-year capital improvement plan. Now, that's five years. But then the effect of the passage of the article is to approve the capital budget for the following years, for the first year of the five-year plan. Gene and I have been discussing it some way during the day today. We haven't gotten a final conclusion on the existing balance of free cash that was rolled forward that hasn't been otherwise designated for use, and how much of that should be made available to the Capital Improvement Committee to allocate to the projects that they rank the highest for year one of the plan. We are narrowing that spread to somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000, reserving a fair amount for either to roll over to next year or for other uses. That are subject to negotiation, specifically in the school department negotiations with their unions. So that's what we're looking at doing for the first year of the plan. As you know, the next four years after that typically reflect consensus over, you know, things that got close but didn't get close enough to be funded in year one. Article 11 is to change, is a placeholder for changing verbiage in the Personnel Bylaw itself. So as I've mentioned, I'm thinking I'm going to be coming forward with a proposal for our longest-serving employees who may have been at the top step for many years and not seen any additional bump to their pay. So that would be a longevity clause to be added to the Personnel Bylaw. The other thing that, and this is something both Gene and I feel strongly about, and when we do it in individual contracts, we already, we already made it so, but this would make it a policy for all of our non-union staff. It was once considered good practice or good form for an employee to take a new job and get no vacation time at all in the first year of their employment. In the modern practice, vacation time is actually seen as more or less a mandatory benefit that employer provides to allow an employee that certain amount of time to themselves, mental health, whatever you want to call it. The purpose of vacation is to give people a break from, from the steady day-to-day activities. And making somebody wait a full year may not be the best practice. We're working out some language with the collective bargaining units about how we want to handle this with them, and I expect that whatever we put forward here will mirror closely some of the language that we might do with some of the unions, which is, there's still, it does need to be a period of time in which you don't have any vacation time. But if you pass through your probationary period satisfactorily, you get the appropriate review, then you maybe get some portion of your first year accrual, and then the bylaw will take over after that. So that's a proposal that's on the table. Articles 12 and 13 are similar. The school committee has requested, along with the school administration, the authority to enter into contracts with a term greater than fi, uh, three years. So that requires town meeting approval. Anything over three years requires town meeting approval. The way that the school department wants to do this, and the way it has to be done, is that anything after year three has to be at the option of the town. So they could strike that option if they think it's in their best interest to do so. One is for school bus transportation. That's Article 12. Article 13 would be for school textbook digital subscriptions and consumables. I think specifically with Article 13, most of the time, of the contracts we're entering into now for any form of IT service seem to be keyed off five years, not three, and the best benefits are to lock in a five-year arrangement. So it's demonstrably within the interest of the town to give the, the school department the authority to do this. School bus transportation is open for debate. I'm not here to talk about the merits. I'm just going over the warrant. That's what's there. So that, so far, is what we have for annual town meeting.
That's the one to Article 13. We no longer have brown paper bags, and we no longer have books that we would cover with brown paper bags. I lament the loss of the past.
I can say that on the.
A big heart with DC plus.
Right. And that would probably be crossed out and replaced.
A few times.
Exactly.
I once covered my book with some really fancy 1980s NFL wallpaper. It was great until it got wet. Yeah. Yeah, that was a tough one.
You can't cover a thumb drive with brown paper, you know.
Now.
I'm just saying.
So is it currently against the law to enter into a five-year contract?
Requires town meeting approval, right?
Is that what this is?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm going to give you my best law school answer. It's not against the law because there's a way to do it.
Yeah.
All right? If you do it without town meeting approval, there's trouble.
Okay, because there was, I think, did the school come to you with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, I think I'm familiar with the particular issue, and that will solve that, and it'd be a nice little feature for the town.
With subscription services, the longer the commitment that you make, the better the terms you're going to get. So equipment, you won't, no, like, if they were coming in and it was actual tangible equipment, they're not going to give you a five-year contract. They can't.
No, they can't.
So, and it's not a matter of legally they can't, it's a matter of the technology outgrows that, and you sweat that asset while it's passed its meaningful life, so. But subscription services and things like that, you usually start at three years and work your way up.
So that's ATM. The special town meeting warrant has four articles currently in it. The first one would be budget transfers and amendments. I'll go through these pretty quickly. There's, there's a need to transfer money to increase the selectman wages. We are going to have a period at the beginning of the fiscal year where Suzanne is still on the payroll post-retirement. So she will have earned her accrued vacation time as a long-term employee of the town, and by law, we must pay her. So we have to make sure there's enough money. Actually, no, that's next fiscal year. This is special town meeting, so the fiscal year we're in, during the transition period, the new person will be paid at the rate that we offer for that job.
So it'll be two people.
With a starting date, so we will have two people on. Sorry, I messed up.
Gotcha.
Two, two, two ends of the same horse, though. Building Department wages, I think we have to just make a small adjustment there to reflect whatever. So we made this from a part-time employee to a full-time employee. If we didn't calculate this properly, I guess we'll chance for it to cover it. Community development expenses, there is the possibility that in order to get all the work done during this fiscal year, in this position, that we might need to hire a consultant to do some work. So we have a contract with CMRPC that I entered into after FinCom gave us a reserve fund transfer of $10,000. So CMRPC is going to give us eight hours a week to cover planning board analysis and reviews and make sure we don't miss critical deadlines. CMRPC during that same period of time is also going to facilitate conversation amongst the community on how to improve the processes and procedures of the planning board, mostly upfront on the admin side before the planning board gets any of the documents. So that's part of the contract as well. But to the extent that we might have to run out and get an engineer, if there's something real big that's going on out there and we need a qualified professional, and it's not in the 53G, then we'll have to make sure that we get out there to do our work. Town clerk wages, I'm not sure. I think that Chris asked that this be put in here. I think, again, this was a calculation issue. Public building expenses, we're holding on to this placeholder because we are not certain what's going to happen with the costs of the cleanup in this building and some of the other things that we have to deal with. We have a placeholder here for the police department and their wages. I actually think this may not materialize because there have been additional changes, but it's in there for placeholder. And then to cover some of these transfers, we would decrease highway administration wages, decrease employee benefits, and decrease the school transportation line to balance the budget for the year. Article two, I saw a big blip in the budget. It's a reval year coming up. So we, we end up with this timing problem. The cost of the contract for reval is approximately $50,000. But the timing is such that we have to have the money available before we can do the procurement, before we can pledge a contract to someone. The work will take place over the course of a better part of a year, and there'll be progress payments, and then the final payment would be in another fiscal year. So we would have to have $50,000 in the operating budget for this big blip, but we're actually not putting that money out until future dates. If that's going to be the case, I am recommending the process that we take the $50,000 out of the operating budget and pay for it out of free cash. It's a one, it's not a one-time thing, it's this regular every several years, but it allows us to not have that hit all occur in one year. In the past, other municipalities I worked for put money into a reval account every single year to smooth this over.
Right.
I'm not sure under Massachusetts municipal finance law that you could do that, or you'd have to create a, you know, a special reserve account. I don't know that Gene likes to do that with the UNIS and all the rest of it. So this is one clean way to handle it. Article three will be snow and ice. As of today, we are $150,000 in deficit on this account.
Probably more coming. I was just going to say, it's not over yet.
No, don't jinx us. We, the first 75 grand covered us and brought us pretty much into balance. And then we had a snowstorm that lasted three days and did nothing really substantial except ice melt, ice melt, ice melt.
Requires lots of salt.
And there was an awful lot of salt dropped, so we needed another 75,000 to cover that and to make sure that we're ready, if we have any small events. But there's always ice in the early spring, late winter. Then last year's bill is Article four. There was an audit adjustment in our workers' compensation insurance of $6,469. Prior year bills are fun because they take a 90% plurality. But we got to pay it because it's an adjustment from our insurance company. Are there any other questions about the warrant?
Well, we had put a deadline to have all this buttoned up, and that's aggressive compared to where we are now. Are you, you think we're going to be okay with that?
Oh, yeah, no, I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
I like this, because I, what kills me is when people come running in here with zoning amendments at the, at the 11th hour, and we're rushing to get a planning board hearing done, and we're rushing, 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 and it feels like we're not giving people the opportunity to really think about what they're voting on. I think we're well ahead of it. You know, capital committees are going to be doing their rankings. All their meetings are videotaped and published anyway, so they'll be doing their rankings in their next meeting. So they should be able to talk about their budget in front of FinCom before the end of this month. The budget will certainly be done by the end of this month. The submission date, I think, a couple of years in a row, I've been turning it in between March 17th and the end of March. So that's pretty much where we are. We, we are waiting, I can get into this in my update to the board, but we are waiting for some big figures to come in.
Anything else, guys?
It's good.
Your friends at CMRPC, Tim?
Are going to be helpful for eight hours a week.
They are, yeah.
Right? And no, in all seriousness, I think that's probably going to help that operation considerably.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Glad to help.
No meeting is complete without a mention of the CMRPC.
Potential for an ambulation, bounds as well. All right, so let's approve the minutes and possible votes.
I must have made a hell of an impact that last meeting. I'm in these things twice in attendance.
Well, once in your, your town role and once in your regional role, I believe.
Could be. So I make a motion that we.
This camera, the other was this microphone.
Make a motion that we approve the February 16 minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
You, Zart.
Bonanay.
Cortez, aye.
Morse, aye.
Morse, aye. This brings us to your administrator's report and COVID-19 update.
I think we skipped yellow and went right to green.
That's a beautiful thing.
But we might. But we might be back in the yellow again. It all kind of depends on which one to count.
Is this COVID or a sinus infection? I mean, where are we at with this?
Yeah, at this point, really, it's, we had gone down to zero active cases at one point, we had three one day and six another, and the, but their quarantine periods are ending, so we really are back at that very low level that we were during the summertime. So, that's the good news. On the vaccination front, we had some early initial success doing it all ourselves, basically signing people up because they don't have internet access, they're not savvy to the technology. Patrice, once again, stepping up to the plate, getting, and her staff, signing on, making up random Hotmail accounts for these people, and signing them up, you know, and getting them to the spot. With some of the changes that have occurred at the state level with the additional emphasis on mass vaccination sites and pretty much telling the regional sites that they weren't going to get any doses, and then on top of that, opening it up at 65 and over, our success really fell off, so we're only getting dripped in vats of people signed up. So, we have about 100 people that were, of the 300 some odd people that were 75 and over that expressed an interest in the shot, about 100 were still waiting to find a way to get them in. We're holding out hope because I think what's happened is the local boards of health from the towns that were forming the regional entity, U-Shots and Uxbridge, have reached out to get other towns so that we could project throughput at the target level of the state wanted, which is 750 a day. And we've had, at the federal level, another vaccine approved, which can start shipping from Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, we're hopeful that supply will go up from the federal government and that these regional vaccination sites will be able to handle our local people without having to drive too long or navigate too difficult a sign-up system. But that is, that is where we are. Very much recognize that people are frustrated by it on many levels. I think we are, we've certainly made our opinions known through the MMA. The fire chiefs and emergency management directors sent off a sprightly letter to the secretary.
Sprightly.
It was toned down quite a bit, but it was still pretty aggressive in its stance. So, the public understands, we really kind of have two emergency management systems that are running in parallel. One is the Department of Public Health operating through the local boards of health, but for many years, the distribution of medical assistance during a time of pandemic was a task that was assigned to emergency management, and the two don't seem to be brought together by the state government. They seem to be left separate right now. So, MEMA's primary roadway now is getting us PPE and the local boards of health have been tasked with the vaccine. So, it's unfortunate, it's not a, not a shining moment in the state's history of response to the pandemic, because the fire chiefs and their apparatus should have been leveraged to assist boards of health. There was no direct call from what we could tell. A lot of, a lot of communication that should have happened didn't happen. In terms of town affairs, we've appointed a minute taker for all of our meetings. We asked that planning board be prioritized. I know one set of minutes has been produced and has been, I think there's one particular member there who does a lot of the work looking at minutes, so I've asked Ashley, the new minute taker, to interact with him, see if she's on track or not. We have a meeting, a very important meeting of the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group tomorrow. We'll be forwarding the renewal conversation as far as we can, so the rates that we will pay for our health insurance coverage. I don't know that we're going to decide it tomorrow, but we'll have a lot more clarity because we'll have two months, two more months of claims data to review before establishing that rate. As you know, on property and casualty insurance, I've been shopping, attempting to shop this business. We're a Maya client right now with some extra coverage from Chubb for injured on duty coverage for police and fire. The news is not good. We are, we just, we're way over 300% of premium with claims. And after this spill in the basement of this building, we could be close to 400%. There isn't going to be anybody who wants to write us without doing some serious due diligence. So, a lot of the big national carriers don't want to look at that. They don't want to, they just want to write you and it's on or off. There is a possibility, we've got a couple of carriers that have expressed an interest, most of our lines are very healthy, so our employee errors and omissions policy, some of our other policies are running very lean, the loss ratios are very low. So, what they're thinking of doing is, you know, maybe we're paying too much for those lines right now and we could take some of the savings from that to offset the necessary increase that we will have to bear on the property side. Maybe we come out more or less where we are, but perhaps with more stability. The one thing that I think our current arrangement is having a hard time explaining, as far as I'm concerned, is this, you know, rather significant increase year over year for several years running. So, even the brokers are asking, well, what's going on? At what point are they going to, they're going to stop trying to recoup all those losses? So, but it is tough. We have, and when, not to get on my soapbox, but when we ask people to invest in capital and to invest in technology, this is what we're talking about. Alarm sensors, extra maintenance, maintenance contracts, look at all this stuff. Now, the spill, I think, is in a category all of its own. I'm not, nobody knows what happened with oil in the basement. It seems like just catastrophic mechanical failure of a pump, and there isn't anything anybody can do about that. Alarm sensor would have helped, but we would still be in the situation we're in because it would still have leaked until somebody got here. And the cost of the cleanup is what got through the floor into the ground, and that's not going to change too, too much. But some of our past issues with, you know, water breaks, line breaks in the school buildings and other things are, really were preventable. And so, that's the situation we're in. We've got to make sure we allocate the staff time and the maintenance resources to keep up with these buildings.
Or invest the capital into smart buildings.
Indeed. E-permitting, we are nearing the end of the project. I think the new building official has done a wonderful job of trying to make this a whole lot more user-friendly. And the best thing that could have happened to us was, it's called flags. So, when you enter your, your parcel data for your project into the e-permitting system, there's a whole bunch of stuff that should populate, you shouldn't need to know, right? You shouldn't need to know necessarily the frontage of your lot, or whether your lot's in the flood zone, or, you shouldn't have to do any of that research. That doesn't, if you have to do that, then e-permitting isn't helping and we invested a lot of money in something that's just another pain in the neck. So, I think Ken really gets it. He's worked with this particular software for years in his prior job in Worcester. You know, make it really easy for the typical contractor or a homeowner who's pulling their own permit to navigate the system and get what they need and pay. So, it's really come a long way in the last month and a half. I still think we're about three or four weeks from go live, but I'm confident we have a much better product. If we'd gone live two months ago, we would have frustrated a lot of people unnecessarily.
Have we let the public know of the forthcoming change?
We will be, so there'll be a lot of outreach to those people who are likely to use it the most, so people building buildings in town, residential structures. If they're not already using it in other town, we'll provide the training and they can come in and we'll walk through an application with them so they can see what they need to do. Most people are pretty excited when they put in their contractor number, their license number, and they see all their information populate, and didn't have to type that, didn't have to write it down.
Yep.
Little things like that actually go a long way to customer satisfaction. I think the best thing is it's live 24/7, so you don't have to come in and see the building official, you can navigate the system.
Anything that'll cross-pollinate with like a CRM of some sort is definitely going to make people's lives way easier.
This is our go week. For all the geeks out there, we're switching from Google to Microsoft, so our internal processes will now reflect the great many-headed monster known as Microsoft. But listen, it was necessary. We signed up, Google's been the best thing going for municipalities for about six or seven years, as I brought it in, Tiffany brought it in here. It was easy to use, yeah, it was a little bit silly with the chains of emails, but it was really easy to use and set up Drive, and it's all intuitive drag-and-drop kind of stuff. But the pricing is aggressive, so when you start to bump up against the thresholds for storage or the number of email accounts that you have, it starts to get really expensive really fast, and they don't budge on it, and that's where we were. So, in some ways, Google priced themselves out of the small municipality market, so now we are moving over to Microsoft. We'll be using SharePoint for collaboration. I'm going to be establishing a lot of those share points for the board, for the finance committee, for the capital committee. It's almost like a little website for your work group, right? Post documents, scheduling issues, I can put up updates.
It's Facebook with a purpose.
It's Facebook with a purpose.
Well said. Somebody read the Microsoft.
Yeah, you really, you grabbed it, but that is what it is.
So, why SharePoint as opposed to OneDrive?
You can still use your OneDrive. OneDrive is in the SharePoint, you're sharing.
Big fan of OneDrive, big fan. Why not Spaces, just saying? Just saying.
I think it works very similarly.
Not as well.
You don't do apps.
We do apps.
I want Excel, PowerPoint, Word, apps that people recognize.
I'm just busting.
In the work.
There is a, are we doing the full 365 suite?
I don't know what full means, but I can tell you Outlook, PowerPoint, Excel.
Teams.
Word, Teams, yeah.
So, is it E4?
And Whiteboard, and this is another part of it, it's interesting, Microsoft Whiteboard.
What licensing are they hitting us with? I would assume it'd be an E3 license.
I don't know what categories they are. I know that we're not spending as much as we would have, but we're getting a lot more bang for our buck. So, pretty much every person gets, every department will get like a terabyte of storage.
Yeah, they're good with the amount of space that they give in.
And it's a G suite. So, our .gov email internet presence and in combination with the G suite from Microsoft, we have not great security, not amazing security, but much more enhanced than what we have right now.
It's better than average.
And we will shut down douglasma.org once and for all, save 900 bucks a year.
So, just go into a single domain?
Yes.
That is a beautiful thing.
It is a beautiful thing.
Sorry, MyWorld again?
I had tested out a Whiteboard for a meeting facilitation, collaboration. It was great, it was wonderful.
It was a toy.
And he came in, the he being the sales rep, after I told him completely, absolutely, truthfully what I thought would be reasonable for us to ask to spend on it, and he doubled it.
Really?
He priced himself out. So, bye-bye. Microsoft is part of the package we're getting with Microsoft, is Microsoft Whiteboard, which does almost all the same things that SmartBoard did. On my Surface Pro, it won't be a touchscreen, so whatever, whether we use this TV or we get another monitor, it won't have that functionality, but you'll still be able to see as I, as, and if five or six people in the room all want the same document up and have their different coloring, they'll be able to, so everybody can see it. That was the idea of it. So, that's a long-winded update.
I'll take a Via Red.
You've just been toiling along trying to make sure all the work gets through while we're shorthanded, and I'm reasonably happy with it. I am anxious to hurry up and get the position built, you know, Bill's old position, that does not be a big, big deal. Oh, I guess one thing I really want to bring up is, two parts of the same issue, economic development. People in town should be watching these joint planning board meetings between Douglas and Sutton and Uxbridge because it's a big project, and a lot of good information is there, it's being posted. Nobody, nobody's going to have a leg to stand on to say that all this information wasn't put out there. VHB took a very formulaic approach to the traffic study, and I think it was the unanimous opinion, I think it's fair to say, of all three planning boards, and those of us who aren't on a planning board but commented, that that, it wasn't acceptable. There's a really big difference between a tractor-trailer distribution hub and a last-mile fulfillment center. The difference is the type of vehicles for, you know, is it all going to be tractor-trailers or is there going to be tractor-trailers in combination with a large quantity of vans delivering to people's homes in the last mile, it's actually more, the last 10 miles, but you know what I'm saying? Sometimes two shifts a day, maybe three. Big difference traffic-wise. They tried to split the difference, well, it's completely unhelpful analysis, it didn't tell anybody anything, and the numbers were low. A number of unrealistic assumptions. I think that at the next meeting, they're going to respond and hopefully update what they've done with better, better research.
If they come back with something like where they're trying to blend it, for every tractor-trailer truck, it's five vans, so if they're not coming up with that number on a one to five, then they're still playing games.
That ratio may have helped, it was just way too low. I think the observed data in the field is what I want to hear about. I don't want to hear about, well, we think it could be this mend, and then it would be five vans for that many trucks. Come on, there's enough Amazon and other major player distribution centers out there have been built all over the United States of America, do a bloody traffic study and use that as your benchmark.
Use Milford.
Use Milford. So, or Fall River, or wherever you're going to be with, use BJ's Wholesale Warehouse Club, which is right down the street from this age. So, that's what we really pushed them to do. Second, on the economic development front, is the state has taken a number of grant programs and put all of their application procedures into one website interface, and then they asked us to enter in what you see happening in your town, forecast the projects that you have reason to believe will happen, and their program, their approach will give you advice on which grant programs you should target, and once you file your letter of interest, when you file future grant applications, they will self-populate because you've already entered in a lot of data and a certain amount of narrative. So, we brought an economic development facilitator on board for this kind of process. Now, it would have, normally would have been done in concert with Mr. Condeff and me, so now most of the burden has fallen on Bob Minara to do it, but he's getting it all done, he's spent many, many hours. We are working with a well-known person who has consulted in the past for successful MassWorks grants, or approach with us has been, not going to charge you for the, for the statement of interest, but when you do MassWorks, you know, I'll be your grant writer and you need to. Now, remember, we have $7,100 or so that was approved by town meeting a couple of years ago that we haven't touched, and it's still there, to pick up this very type of process, this very type of relationship with a grant writing consultant. But right now, I can't be happier because a lot of the work, it's budget season, we've got personnel to fill. This was, this is why I asked for this position, this part-time position, was to get the work done and not miss a beat, and grateful to Selectman Davis for some of his editing help on this as well because he's got background in different economic development programs that are out there, so we tapped into his expertise, too. So, I think tomorrow, we're going to submit.
I like it. Is there anything else, sir?
I can go on and on, but I think that's the highlights.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
No?
Okay.
Are there any open session topics that were not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing as none, I would look for one of Mr. Bonan's very famous motions.
Very well, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining and litigation and then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that well-crafted motion.